The the meeting of county council, the regular meeting of March 16th to order. May we have everyone stand with us and join in the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And Councilwoman Shauerman, would you lead us in the optional prayer this evening?
Yes, I chose one in light of St. Patrick's Day tomorrow. It's an Irish blessing. It say, may love and laughter light your days and warm your heart and home. May good and faithful friends be yours wherever you may roam. May peace and plenty bless your world with joy that long endures. May all life's passing seasons bring the best to your you and yours. Thank you.
Cheers.
Cheers. Thank you so much for that. Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Clear?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
You're on mute.
Mr. Rastetter?
Here.
Here, here.
Mrs. Rennie?
Here.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Here.
Mr. Shank?
Here.
Chairman Anderson?
Here.
We didn't have any members of the public sign up to to receive the five minutes. But at this portion of the meeting, or if there are any members of the public that would like to be recognized, they will get three minutes. And are there any members of the public that wish to be heard? Are there any members of the public that wish to be heard? And finally, any members of the public that wish to be heard? Seeing none, let's move forward with our agenda. And we have the minutes from our March 2 regular meeting. Are there any questions or comments from members of council? May I have a motion for their acceptance?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Shank, seconded by Councilwoman Clear. Again, any other further questions or comments? Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
An approval of the minutes, Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Sparber, do you have a report by the county executive or has her designated this evening?
Tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sparber. Next, I will entertain a report from the Finance Committee. Finance Chairwoman Clear, if you would give us your report, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. The Finance Committee met on Thursday, March 11, 2021. And I am submitting tonight for the agenda old business letters A and B and new business items A through J. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. And then the Personnel Committee also met. And Personnel Chairwoman Rennie, if you would give us a report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Personnel Committee did meet on Thursday, March 11. And I would like at this time to thank Mr. Shank for chairing the Personnel Meeting in my absence and subsequently bringing forth the items for tonight's agenda, which are items K through P for tonight. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have two citations on tonight's agenda for citizens of our community that council wishes to recognize for their commitment to our community and to their families. And Mr. Smith, if you would just for us read the two citations for the one for myself, you could just do in title only. And then I will make a couple of brief comments. And then I will let Councilman Rastetter make comments on his citation.
A County of Erie citation for Mr. Richard Tome, 1929 through 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Dick Tome was a classmate of my father's all the way from grade school all the way through high school and academy, a class of 1948. And they had a relationship throughout life, although their working paths and and family paths had taken them in different directions. They always had a connection of the time that they enjoyed and the friendship that they had throughout their school years. Mr. Tome was personally very supportive of myself when when I sought public office. We kind of make it easy in the Anderson family by naming everybody Carl. And so when I first knocked on Mr. Tome's door and identified myself as Carl Anderson, he said, you couldn't possibly be Jakey's son, could you? And when I told him that I was, he warmly invited me into his home. And we had a great conversation and developed a friendship of our own. And I was so appreciative of him and his support of me and my father's relationship with him. And he was, as I said earlier, dedicated to work and family. And he will be thoroughly missed as a member of this community. So we remember him here at council tonight after his passing. Thank you. Mr. Smith, if we could have in title only Mr. Everhart's citation. And then I will turn it over to Mr. Rastetter. If you would like the citation read through completely or just make comments, I will leave that up to you.
County of Erie citation for Mr. Nathan Edgar Everhart, 1963 through 2021.
Councilman Rastetter?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I didn't know Mr. Everhart personally. But when I read his story in the newspaper, I knew I had to send a citation to his family. He sounds like such a great guy. And from what I understand, everybody at the school, General McLean loved him. It's just a really sad story. He died at age 57. And he had so many interests and he did so much work for the community. What a great guy. Community watch. Bible studies, a faithful servant of Christ. And a gardener at that was one of his specialties, water skiing, backpacking, rock climbing. I don't know how many daughters he had. Three daughters and a son. Brothers. But anyhow, yeah, what a great guy. It was really sad. He died at age 57. And and I know there's a big hole in the community without him. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rastetter. Any other members of council wish to make any comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward with reports of other members of council. And Councilwoman Clear, you had asked for a time to make a report. And and I should recognize you also as with all the hats you wear, Vice Chairwoman Council and co-chair of the COVID Impact Committee. Please go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I and I have to say, I guess tonight I really wanted to give an update on the COVID impact and economic revitalization committee. And I think a lot of the reason why I'm bringing it up today, because we've been meeting every week, minimum one time a week for since the first week, second week of January, I believe, is because we have just been told that we will be receiving the American Rescue Plan Act grant funding. And I have to tell you, I'm going to start because Chairman Anderson was the one who created this committee. And I remember when Chairman Anderson actually brought the idea of the committee to me before his chairmanship began. And because he wanted to get a head start on a plan of how Erie County would survive and flourish after the pandemic, not just, you know, are we going to be able to do things the way we did before? But how can we use this as a springboard for what? For what Erie County can be? How do we make sure that we are all going to survive but also flourish? So yes, we have the American Rescue Plan Act, which we are going to be meeting with members from all over the community starting on Thursday. Because there are so many different areas that, of course, are getting access to this funding as well. But the the actual committee that we that has been meeting minimum once a week, as I said before, of the COVID impact and economic revitalization committee. Chairman Aaron Anderson and I are co-chairs, Councilwoman Rennie, Councilman Brian Shank, Dr. Perry Wood from EGR, Ms. McCauley from EGR, of course, has been coordinating, Ms. Amy Murdock from the Erie Chamber and Growth Partnership, Dr. Ferretti from the Jefferson, Ms. Jessica Heran Kunko, Kuntso, sorry, Honey Stempka, Dr. Paris Baker. So, you know, the mission statement of our of the committee has really been a community outreach body to investigate the impact that COVID is having on Erie County individuals, on the lives of business and on the lives of individuals, but also businesses, municipalities, nonprofits, minority groups, et cetera. And, you know, where we are still in the stages of data collecting. If I know this sounds crazy, but we have so many different people that have been doing outreach in order to get information to be brought. And we've already accumulated so much information. We've been talking to individuals. We have, again, these organizations have been sending out surveys for us. We've been hearing from business leaders, small businesses, nonprofits, and other members of Erie County to, I guess, gauge where they are in their lives, the economic situation that they're in, their life at home, their lives at work, are they are they working? We've been asking them questions about how COVID has affected them in the community and the economy. What are the existing plans that we that are in place? How can we use those to address the effects of COVID on Erie County? And, you know, how sustainable and viable are our local governments and nonprofits? So really, we're working on this inventory of needs. And we also are trying to identify the resources then that are available to us. So some of the people that we've been hearing from, we've been hearing from experts such as Bruce Katz, which I think was a highlight for a lot of us. He is a world renowned, world renowned for his work on helping cities design, finance, deliver transformative initiatives that promote an inclusive and sustainable growth. We heard from Dr. Ken Louie from Penn State Barren on the health of our Erie economy or lack thereof health. We have also had the Chamber of Commerce give our give their, I'm sorry, the Chamber and Growth Partnership, sorry, share their findings. And they are continuing to do surveys of the Erie area. EGR has actually been kind of the cornerstone. They have been actually coordinating all of our meetings and setting up our Zooms. But they also are doing Main Street surveys. So we have to thank Perry Wood for all that he's done to kind of take this on and organize. We've been looking at the urban rural divide, you know, what does that look like and how can that be addressed? We've got the county of governments, Jessica Heran Kuntso has brought so much information from the municipalities where they're at, where they're going, especially with the lack of tax, whether it's property tax or income tax, because so many people are out of work. What's that going to look like? Kathy Von Berking from the Ben Franklin Technologies shared with us the impact on on women. We have the nonprofit partnership and Erie Bank Sports Park and the Erie Sports Commission, who have also explained the impact that it's had on them. The Erie Convention Center Authority, which, as we know, is far reaching. Dr. Paris Baker also gave us a really great insight on to a lot of our minority communities and what that and the impact that's had, along with Mr. Gary Horton, who was able to share that with us. We in the coming weeks, and we're still doing this, we are looking to hear from Bob Smith from Pleasant Ridge Manor, Bishop Brock, Autumn Anderson, James Sheridan. We have so many people from all of these different areas that that we are counting on to help us see this global impact. I mean, this is countywide. This is not urban, this is not rural, it's both. It is both. It is both. We've learned a lot and the results have been astonishing and far reaching from one end of the county to the other, north, south, east, west. No group is exempt from this economic impact due to COVID-19. And, you know, we don't necessarily have any one thing in place right now. And Councilman Horton had said, you know, he'd love to see something as soon as I can. And I will share all of the information I have with you, Councilman Horton, just so you know. Of I've been taking notes during everybody's talks. So anyway, I really feel that we're going to be coming up with some things, but we need to be aggressive. And I think that Chairman Anderson, when he created this committee, knew that this was going to be coming. We do have the the new funding, the American Rescue Plan Act money that we have here. And we need to act now. So anyway, I'll end it with there. But I'm proud of all the work and all of the time that so many people, including Councilman Shank, Councilwoman Rennie, thank you so much for all the time you've been putting in. And Council and Chairman Anderson, obviously. So that concludes my report, Chairman Anderson.
Thank you, Vice Chairwoman Clear. Any other members of council which to give a report? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to to give a brief report and also give an update of the COVID Impact Committee. And I certainly want to thank Vice Chairwoman Clear for her report. And she pretty much covered everything. But but I too want to return the the recognition to her that she has has also worked tirelessly with the members of this committee to keep this project moving forward. And as we discussed with council, when we first proposed this committee, it was our hope that we would be able to prioritize and strategize with every group and every organization throughout Erie County. The number one goal of this committee is to make sure that everybody is touched and that there's equity across all of Erie County. Because everybody in this pandemic has been touched. And inequity has been amplified multiple times with this pandemic in showing where structurally we need to make significant changes. And we need to continue to move social issues forward and do that for the betterment of our entire community. But we also are very concerned about the destabilization of our institutions. Institutions in this sense, meaning every single thing that affects every one of our daily lives, whether it's an institution important to us or whether it's an institution important to our entire community. These institutions that we have, and I don't want to go back through the list that Councilwoman Clear has already mentioned. But all of these groups from the travel and tourist industry and Visit Erie's Impact and the Sports Commission, Pleasant Ridge Manor, and how we're able to give senior care to multiple generations of people and reach throughout Erie County to allow people who have given their entire lifetime of investment to this community a place to live in their their last years with dignity and respect and honor what their commitment has been to this community. The the long term vision that we need to take on all of these institutions as we as a community unite together and move this community forward coming out of this pandemic. We need to ensure that we're stronger and we're more stable than we were even before the pandemic began. You know, a longtime mentor of mine has always said that a crisis is a terrible thing to waste. And in this particular circumstance, we need to make sure that as we come out of this crisis, we really have a new trajectory and a new vision for our community. I will say that our initial ideas were that from this committee, perhaps a report that would be given to the committee in maybe the third quarter of this year may spark investment from local members of the community, from the philanthropic community and other members. And then perhaps we could be able to get grant money from the federal government. But what has actually transpired is something in the complete reverse of that. And that the federal government and the money has begun to come to our community first, which I think will spur more interest and and commitment and investment in our community from those other entities. So I am very appreciative of County Executive Doll Camper and her administration who are being the watchdogs over this relief act and how this was going to transcend into the Erie community and informing us of the money that Erie County will be receiving. We do anticipate that it'll be about 60 days before we receive the money. And we're going to have till the end of 2024 to spend it. County Executive Doll Camper has called together a meeting for this Thursday of the leadership of Erie County with with members of different municipalities and school districts. I think it's critically important, as she has said, that we all work together and collaborate. I agree with her on that. I believe that the other communities, however, need to have their autonomy as well as their willingness to collaborate with us. So I would hope that we would, that each of these other groups, like county government, would form their own autonomous entities within their municipalities, prioritize their listings and their agendas for how we should strategically use this money. And then as we join together, have a committee of the leaders of all of those groups that join together as a countywide group. So we can make sure that we're leveraging the money that is potentially coming in to the best benefit of all taxpayers of Erie County. We could have the possibility of being able to receive our cap funds for projects that have been sitting on the shelf that could be moved up, you know, as many as five or 10 years in advance. We need to ensure that we are not all supporting the same projects and overspending in one area and not spending in another. Again, we need to ensure that we have equity across all of Erie County. And we need to make sure that we have equity outside of the north of I-90, you know, area that that gets seems to get a majority of the funding. We need to make sure that volunteer fire companies in throughout Erie County. And I know there's bridge work, the projects that that are waiting for funding in Councilman Rastetter's district that are important to those communities. We may need to make sure that all of those projects are on the table and that we leverage these funds to the best of our ability. And I think, you know, there's we have the possibility as well through other silos of this funding to receive up to potentially as much as $100 million more in federal funding. And so we want to make sure that we methodically move through this process with the county executive and this committee and the county executive's administration and make sure that the dust settles. So we know some of the other silos where the money is coming from. But most importantly, and ultimately, we need all need to work together in unity to ensure that the the leverage and the trajectory of this community is moved forward in a positive fashion coming out of this pandemic. And I appreciate the works that all members of council are doing and the work that the committee is doing. I would also suggest out there to members of the community, if there are things important to you or to areas of the county that you feel have not yet had an opportunity to speak in front of the committee, please reach out to us because everybody is welcome to speak at this committee. And one of the other items that we will begin to move forward are listening sessions in each council district throughout Erie County, where people will have an opportunity from every district of Erie County to come in and talk about what's important to them. So the the work continues, the work will continue in working together with the administration and moving all of these forward. And I look forward to our continued work together. And with that said, let's continue moving forward on our agenda tonight. Under old business, Mr. Smith, may I have a second reading of ordinance number 14 in title only?
Second reading of ordinance number 14, 2021. 2021 Public Health Fund Budget, revised expenditures of $12,020 for temporary increase in wages and hours for acting director of public health.
So moved.
Miss Councilman Horton, yeah, you're you're on mute. But I did hear Councilman Horton move, so I'm going to recognize him as moving this item and Councilwoman Shauerman as seconding. Are there any other questions or comments from members of council? Councilman Horton, please.
Yeah, I'm supporting this this ordinance this evening. I I've come here every week and I acknowledge the work that the Health Department and the staff has done. I know that we all have been placed under duress. It's times. I know we all have been placed under duress, have been asked to do more, oftentimes with less. So we had some heated debate or I won't even say debate. I'll say we had heated conversation or discussion, not even heated, extensive discussion about this. The one thing that 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 no one can can dispel or disagree with is that the Health Department has stepped up in a mighty way to do a Department has stepped up in a mighty way to do a, and they've done the county and its residents a huge, huge service. I do speak with Director Lyons quite frequently, and I do know that the workload, just like it has in our office for our clerk and our staff, whether it be election or whatever, top with COVID, on top of COVID, it's, it's, it's like three, four, five times as much work as they've been accustomed to doing. So I want to support this because, you know, I read this other book, I'm not a very religious person, but there are some things I do religiously. And one of them is I read this book, and it says that the labor truly is worthy of its hire. And I wish that all the dedicated citizens, employees from Erie County that come and show up and, and, and under the toughest of circumstances with the low wages, I wish I could give them all a raise, but the reality of it is, is that we are charged to be fiscally responsible, responsible. And we've done that. This is grant money, it's not coming out of the general fund, and I would ask my colleagues that they would join me in supporting this as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Horton. Are there any other comments from members of council? Councilwoman Clear?
Yes, I also, I share Councilman Horton's appreciation for the Health Department, and I am also going to be voting for this. We cannot thank, I mean, we've said this about a year ago, we started having this conversation, how are we going to support the Health Department? And how are we going to get them what they need in order to get us through this pandemic? And having someone to perform additional services and be paid for it, I think is important. And so, yes, I want to thank publicly out loud the Health Department for everything that they have done and continue to do in the county. And the, the, we are very, very lucky to have a Health Department in Erie County. There are so many counties in Pennsylvania that don't have anyone, and we have true leadership here. So when I hear the stories of, you know, the Booker T. Washington Center having, being flooded with people to get their COVID vaccine and, and these other satellite locations around the county, it just, it just is affirmation of everything that they have been doing to keep us healthy and safe and continue to do so. I yield, thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you. Any other members of council? I'm going to make some comments in regards to this particular item, and I want to thank Director Lyons for all the work that she continues to do on behalf of Erie County. We find ourselves in unprecedented circumstances. We find the work that needs to be done unprecedented, and the time committed to do it unending, and the commitment of the people who are doing the work unwavering. And we need to continue to have the strength of all of those things and more as we continue to work our way through the pandemic. You know, with the additional responsibilities that has been added on to this position as Acting Director, as Director Lyons has taken on additional responsibilities for, for the COVID pandemic and its containment. You know, certainly, we need to recognize the importance of recognizing the people who are we, we are putting in leadership positions to do this work. This certainly, without question, shows how, you know, we, we on council continue to be open-minded to, that there are changing times and changing circumstances that occur, that things happen within county government, within the pay plan itself, that, that show that from time to time, there needs to be adjustments made. I think it's appropriate, I think it's accurate, I think it's necessary that we do this. I think it's necessary that we do this for the Acting Director at the Health Department, particularly as these funds are falling under grant monies. But it's, it's also important that we do this because, you know, government is always moving, it's always reforming and reshaping, and we need to be on our toes, and we need to be nimble, and when those changes need to be made, we need to be open and flexible in doing that. This is certainly one of those circumstances. So with that said, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On Ordinance 14, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is a second reading of Ordinance Number 19. Mr. Smith, may we have that in title only?
A second reading of Ordinance Number 19, 2021, 7th, 2021, General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $149,228, a new department for PCCD COVID Relief Grant.
So moved.
We have the motion moved by Councilwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Horton. And do we have an amendment on this one?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilwoman Clear?
Um, I would like to amend the language in this resolution, I'm sorry, ordinance, ordinance, thank you. We, I would like to amend the word department, and I would like any place that the word department appears inside of the ordinance to have it be changed to the word bureau. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We have a motion for amendment?
I'll second it.
The motion was made by Councilwoman Clear, seconded by Councilwoman Showerman. Are there any questions or comments from members of council? May, may we have a roll call vote on the amendment, Mr. Smith?
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. And can we have a, we have the motion, so can we have a, if there's no other questions or comments from members of council, can we have a motion as amended?
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Shank, seconded by Councilwoman Showerman. Mr. Smith, can we have a roll call vote, please? On the motion, on the ordinance as amended?
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton? Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is New Business?
Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Vice Chairwoman Clear?
I would like to amend the, I would like to move to amend the, amend the agenda. I move to take, move items A and B to a second reading, as well as Group E through J, which are the parcel of sales to one vote, and then group together the appointments K through P as one motion as well. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion to amend the agenda by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Horton. Any questions or comments from members of council? Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On the motion to amend the agenda, Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Smith, may we have a second reading of Ordinance Number 20 of 2021 and title only, please?
The second reading of Ordinance Number 20, 2021, Second, 2021, Mental Health, Intellectual Disabilities, MHI-D, Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $17,740,92 for Emergency Rental Assistance Grant Funding.
A move?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman, Vice Chairwoman Clear, and seconded by Councilman Shank. Are there any questions or comments from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
An Ordinance 20, Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
I just want to make one, one quick comment after our passage, and that is, you know, this program of $17 million in a rental assistance program certainly is a critical element to, to helping those folks in need of assistance and, and an opportunity to create some equity here. I certainly hope that people will take advantage of the program, that the, the, the poor and the socially disadvantaged and the homeless will have an opportunity, if not them individually, then the caregivers that are watching out for them, and, and certainly that Erie County Care Management, and through our Human Services Department overseen by them, will diligently ensure that these funds get out and are used to help those people in Erie County that need that assistance. This, this is a large sum of money that can go a long way. Certainly, it only becomes a drop in the bucket, but, but it's a major step forward in assisting those folks. Mr. Smith, may we have a second reading of Ordinance Number 21 of 2021 and title only, please?
Second reading of Ordinance Number 21, 2021, 8th, 2021, General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $196,000 Tourism Grant to Visit Erie.
So moved.
Second.
The motion was moved by Councilman Horton, seconded by Vice Chairwoman Clear. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? I would just say, before the vote, I'm just going to make a comment that, to John Oliver from Visit Erie, thank you for the community spirit that you showed at the end of the year and your fiscal responsibility that you showed in returning the funds that were not spent at the time, so they could be reallocated. These, these are the kind of community partnerships and cooperation and unity that I know I recognize and I believe my colleagues recognize. And, and so coming back for this supplemental appropriation, now that your organization feels that the need and the, the advantage is there to get these monies back on the street in the travel and tourism industry is not, does not go without recognition from council, so thank, thank you for that. And Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
An Ordinance Number 21, Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, may we have a reading of Resolution Number 9 of 2021 and title only?
Resolution Number 9, 2021, authorizing the filing of a proposal for funds with the Department of Community and Economic Development, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Showerman, seconded by Vice Chairwoman Clear. Are there any questions or comments from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On Resolution Number 9, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Scott, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't hear you, you're on mute.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is Resolution Number 10 of 2020. Mr. Smith, may we have a reading of that in title only, please?
Resolution Number 10, 2021, approving a professional services contract for Zelenkovsky and Axelrod Certified Public Accountants for consultation on pandemic-related state and federal funding.
Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chairwoman Clear?
I believe that it was of the council, the majority of council's interest to go ahead and move to table this.
Okay, thank you, you're making a motion to table this item?
I am making a motion to table this item.
Thank you.
On behalf of council, getting more information, and I don't know if I'm allowed to keep talking, sorry.
Thank you. You can talk while you're making your motion. So we have a motion?
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Councilwoman, Vice Chairwoman Clear, and seconded by Councilman Shank to table this item. And Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote on the table?
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Next on our agenda is the possible sale of parcels from our repository. We have amended the agenda to include them as one motion, so I would accept a motion to dispose of the, the sales of the repos, the parcels and repository.
So moved.
Second.
The motion was made by Councilman Horton, seconded by Councilman Shank. Are there any comments or questions from other members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On the sale of the parcels listed in our agenda tonight, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. We have also moved to amend the agenda to include all of the possible to include all of the possible, uh, appointments or reappointments to members of boards and commissions. Uh, most of them on the agenda are, uh, county, the county executives' appointments, uh, and one appointment from, uh, Councilwoman Showerman. Uh, so I would, uh, accept a motion, uh, to, uh, approve all of these appointments tonight as one motion.
So moved.
Uh, the motion was moved by, uh, Councilman Shank, seconded by Councilwoman Showerman. And are there any members of council that would like to make any comments? Uh, Councilwoman Showerman, please?
Yes, I would just like to say that my appointment is actually a reappointment of Diana Ames to the Human Relations Commission Advisory Board. And she's been there for several years in this position, and she comes very highly recommended. And I've heard nothing of, but good things about the work that she's done with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other, uh, comments that council members would like to make on the appointments? Um, I do want to make, uh, one, one comment, uh, with, uh, County Executive's Doll Campers reappointment of Owen McCormick, uh, to a second, uh, term from the Erie County Industrial Development Authority. Uh, I know, uh, Owen, uh, uh, extremely well. Uh, he is incredibly committed, uh, to Erie County and to the work that's being done in Erie County. Uh, his family, uh, has, uh, uh, been a longtime, uh, established, uh, business in Erie County, employing several hundred people, uh, and, uh, have made, uh, long-term commitments and investments to this community uh, on behalf of their own family. Uh, and, uh, any, anytime, uh, Owen, uh, steps up and serves the community, uh, it's something that deserves a little, uh, extra recognition, uh, because Owen is an extra special person. Uh, and, uh, he's, uh, very committed to our community. So, uh, I congratulate him on his, uh, reappointment uh, and applaud the county executive, uh, for that reappointment. Um, with that said, uh, Mr. Smith, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
On the slate of appointments on tonight's agenda, Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastatter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I just want to ma- as a, as a avid basketball, uh, uh, fan, I just want to make sure that everyone, uh, sees, uh, Councilman Horton's, uh, comment in the chat, uh, that he put up thirty-six points against Owen McCormick in a basketball tournament. Uh, and I might add no, no easy feat, uh, at that, uh, as, uh, Owen is, uh, uh, is, uh, an extreme competitor as well. So, uh, congratulations to you, Councilman Horton. Um, before we adjourn, I, I did want to mention to council that I received a call this afternoon, uh, from, and I haven't had a chance to, to look at, uh, the information that was sent. Um, but there is a, uh, uh, I, I guess, for lack of a better word tonight, uh, movement afoot, uh, that, uh, in the construction industry, the, the way in which, um, uh, pay has been done, uh, over the years, um, in certain segments of the, uh, industry. Uh, it has cost, uh, taxpayers, uh, potentially hundreds of millions of dollars, uh, in, in taxes, uh, that has been, uh, skirted around, uh, the, uh, the rules. Um, there have been, uh, several, uh, meetings that have occurred across, uh, Pennsylvania and across several states. Uh, today, there was a meeting of five states attorney generals, uh, that met. Um, the presentation, uh, a- about, uh, this effect on the, uh, uh, construction industry and, and the black eye that it's leaving, uh, on the construction industry, uh, for, particularly for those folks in the construction industry, uh, that play by the rules, uh, and, and are, uh, productive, uh, citizens in, in all of their communities. Um, there's a presentation that they would like to, uh, have, uh, brought to council. It takes about an hour, uh, to go over that presentation. Uh, and, uh, it's, it's probably something that's going to end up in, uh, several, uh, legal, um, uh, challenges, lawsuits, um, but it will have an effect on, uh, not only the construction industry, uh, but all of the taxing bodies, uh, within the construction industry. So, um, I, I, as I said, I haven't had a chance to, to look over all the information. Uh, but from, uh, what, uh, was explained, uh, to me, uh, I thought it's something that certainly is worthwhile for council, uh, to be made aware of, uh, and, uh, and have a, a meeting on. And, um, so I was thinking perhaps, um, um, on April first, um, at, at maybe three o'clock, prior to the finance meeting, uh, because we never know when the finance and personnel meetings end. Uh, but we could potentially do it after the finance meeting, depending on what, uh, council's, uh, you know, wishes are, uh, but I, I, I throw that out to you, uh, and, and would like to, uh, to have, uh, this group, uh, contact Nicole and Doug, uh, to begin to set something up for council. So, uh, if everybody i- is in agreement on, uh, April first, uh, I would like to have them come in at, at three P M. Okay? Does that seem to be, uh, uh, yeah, uh, Mr. Horton, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I don't have a problem with April first, first off, but what, what group is this? Do they have a name or title?
Well, yeah, it's the, the, the actual, uh, group that's putting this presentation on is, uh, the carpenters, uh, union.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, the, the carpenters association, and, um, they, they are the ones, I guess, that is actually bringing on. I, I don't know if they're bringing on a suit, but at least bringing it, uh, forward to the general public, uh, to, uh, to, you know, to, to, because this is becoming a, a big issue, I guess, across the country, uh, in, in the way in which, um, people are classified as, uh, employees or self-employed or, uh, ten ninety-nine versus, uh, in employee. And, uh, so it's, it's an issue that we're going to be hearing a lot, quite a bit more about, I suspect, from the conversation. And again, just the fact that there were, uh, five attorney generals, uh, including Pennsylvania's Attorney General, and I don't know who the other states were, but I, I assume the surrounding states to us, uh, that got together, uh, to have discussions on how this impacts, uh, each and every municipality, uh, across the, the Commonwealth and other states. Um, uh, again, I think it's something, uh, a- at least us, uh, you know, whether we agree with it or not is, is a different thing, but at least us knowing the information, uh, and, and taking that, um, uh, you know, understanding the, uh, the fiscal consequences, uh, that are behind this. Okay?
We're all about it.
And, yeah, and I'll, I'll, uh, make sure that, uh, all members of council, uh, get, get a copy of the, uh, what was sent to me today by email.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, uh, Councilman Horton?
Uh, in the chat.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I just, thank you. I just, as, as you mentioned it, um, is that gonna, Nicole, is that something that's a, a short meeting? Is that a, a election board meeting or?
Uh, no, it is an H R C review of bylaws.
Okay.
So Scott, I mean, um, Mr. Smith could probably speak better to the time.
Yeah, is that something that could be?
I think we could move our meeting to two P M. and be done by three.
Okay. Great. Thank, thank you for that. Um, and then I think, Mr. Councilman Shank, did, did you have a question?
No, sir. I was just going to bring it to your attention that, uh, about Nicole's note.
Okay.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Okay, so, uh, if they're amenable to moving that and, and we can get this group in, uh, maybe we can accomplish all of that, uh, on April first. Uh, and again, I'll make sure that, that council gets the information that was sent to me. Okay? Um, with that said, uh, our next, um, Finance and Personnel Committee meeting will begin at four P M. Uh, on April first, and the regular meeting, um, will, will occur on April sixth at four P M. With caucus beginning at three thirty. Uh, if there's, uh, no other business to bring before council this evening, I would ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.
Wow, five, five thirty-seven. Rock on.